His hand. Perfect.
Hi.
Yes, sir. You're so lucky. All right. Yeah.
Whenever you want to go live.
We'll call it that. All right, guys. They're calling me in order. I'll be very gentle with the gavel. Maybe you've called them. Can we roll call, yes, please?
Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Pataola?
Meet them, meet them.
Yeah, I was muted. I'm here.
Mr. Pavlov?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher? Dr. Suckner? Ms. Shields?
Here.
And Dr. Burks?
Here.
All right. We're good. To the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where our borders stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent.
Yes, cultivating learners who apply skills and experiences to enrich society.
Yes. I think we actually do. All right, so now we have our student success section. And I think this goes to Dr. Baumman pretty quickly.
Yes, it does. The first item that we got on the student success part of our board meeting tonight comes from the Yorkville High School Student Services Department. They are proposing a two-day, or excuse me, a four-day spring testing schedule. That includes a two-day practice event that would happen in March. And a two-day state testing event that would happen in April. In order to maintain proper safety protocol and safe social distancing. We are proposing at this point in time to have this testing, the testing events happen over a two-day schedule. That way, we can have students come and be split. And so effectively, in the first practice day session, which would take place on Wednesday, March 3rd, Thursday, March 4th. We would have the students in the Fox team come on Wednesday. And that would be the students in grades ninth, 10th, and 11th. Our seniors would have an asynchronous day at home. The other students in the DEM team would also have an asynchronous day at home. And the following day, we would switch. And therefore, the students in the DEM team would come and take their assessment on campus that are in grades ninth, 10th, and 11th. And our seniors would have another asynchronous day that day. This testing schedule will allow us to get through the entire student body from grades nine through 11th. And offer an additional practice assessment. On the days when students are in attendance, they would then resume their regular testing schedule. So the Fox Stephen students, on the 3rd of March, would then, after taking their test, go to periods eight and six. And the following day, on March 4th, students that are in the DEM odd testing schedule would go to periods seven and five. And so that's the first part of the four-day testing schedule in two days in March. The second testing schedule window will take place on April 13th and April 14th. We would follow a similar strategy, have half of the student body attend in one day, half of the student body attend another day. But we do have less flexibility on this time because the state mandates that the SAT, which is our assessment that we give to our 11th grade students, will all be taken at the same time. And so on the first day, on April 13th, within that testing schedule, we would have students in the DEM cohort on grades nine and 10th. And all students in 11th grade attend to take their PSAT and their SAT tests. Our students that are not in Team DEM would then work asynchronously that day along with our 12th grade students. The second day, we would have our students on grades nine and 10 on Team Fox come to school and take that assessment on the 14th of April. And this testing schedule in April, the state mandated test, there is a proposal to have an early dismissal. That's something that we typically do over the course of the last few years when we give the state mandated issue assessment. And we've outlined the schedule in the memo. It would result in a departure time for students on those days, right around anywhere from 11:15 in the morning, kind of the student state accommodated test. It would be later in the afternoon. Happy to answer any questions about this item or entertain any discussion.
Congratulations on accomplishing.
What it is, right? Great, so then it's, all right, it's our information. And we're just going to move forward with that on the schedule, right?
We'll bring it to the board for approval at the end of the month.
Excellent.
Yep.
Oh, you anticipated the changes.
I do know.
All right, so that's, that's great. So now we're going to spend a lot of money, right?
We, we are. Normally, I bring this to the board in May every year to purchase our annual 1,200 devices for the Chromebook replacement cycle. But due to the pandemic that is taking place, the supply chain has been a little limited on Chromebooks. So we are bringing this in February, hoping that we have devices by June. So we can roll them out at the beginning of the summer like we do every year. This proposal is a little different because due to the pandemic last year, we rolled out devices to K-3 students. Kindergartners have tablets, first, second, third have Chromebooks. So we need to add another grade level to our annual cycle. So what used to be fourth, seventh, and 10th grade will now be first, fourth, seventh, and 10th every year moving forward. So in the proposal, you could see our, our normal annual spend is about $308,000. That's for 1,200 devices, but due to adding first grade, we need to purchase an additional 400 devices. So the, the impact to the budget would be about $439,000. We'll lease that over three years, just like we always have in the past. We'll use Providence Capital just like we have in the past. So moving forward, every, every year, we'll add an additional grade level. So that cycle will roll right in. It's in our budget, met with Mindy a couple of weeks ago, and we, we added that into our budget. So money-wise, we're good. We'll be guaranteed to have the Chromebooks by June. These are our normal Dell 3100 Chromebooks that we're purchasing. So nothing different there, just adding a grade level.
All right, so it's pretty much just an additional.
Just an additional one grade. It's the same, it's our, it's our annual lease agreement, nothing changes, just the quantity and the dollar amount. That's the only thing that changes. The rollout plan doesn't change, we just added the grade level to it. So moving forward, and then, you know, Mindy has a great spreadsheet that outlines how this impacts the budget every single year moving forward, leasing it out. So we just added that grade level, that sheet, and it just moves down the column as we go year to year.
And this, these additions were part of the fighter projections.
That you already made.
Correct.
Correct.
Excellent. All right, and again, I'm sure this will be coming up at our next meeting.
Yep. And then we'll order them the next, the following day. And then, you know, if CDW gets the devices in by chance, they'll come early, which is great. I'd rather have them on site than wait to order them and then we can't get them. So worst-case scenario, they show up a month later and, and we just house them here and we're still ready to go for the beginning of the school year.
Right. Now, really, there's not a huge impact of a couple of months when it comes to the lease.
No, and we have the room to store them here on site.
Right. All right, well, we know it's coming, that's, that's good. And committee information updates, we've been meeting as a committee of a whole for, what, a year?
Too long.
So, yeah, too long. So this particular line item probably doesn't have a lot of particular value unless someone has been working with an individual that wants to bring something up. And that would be probably myself with that, so.
There's a question.
Oh, a question. This year, seventh graders did not get the new Chromebook.
Yeah.
Yes, Jorge, so you are correct. This year, our normal replacement cycle did not go as how, how we normally do it. And the reason is because we took those new devices that were allocated for fourth, seventh, and 10th grade and rolled them out to kindergarten, first, second, third. So we are working on a plan right now to recollect those devices either in the spring or at the start of the school year. And we will cycle them out so that students will get back on cycle starting in the 21, 22 school year. So, yeah, seventh graders, fourth, fifth graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders are off-cycle right now. That was just by design on purpose. It's not like we didn't just roll out those devices to those students. But we will get them back on cycle so they'll have new devices, a year-old device next year.
Okay, hopefully that answers that question. And, and we always have a policy that if there's a child that needs a device because something came up, we always.
100%. And we, we have a loaner program. If a device breaks, my staff fixes it. So, you know, as there's problems with the device, we, we either trade it out for a newer device, they get a loaner until it's fixed. We have, we have a whole plan that stays in place for that.
Okay. All right. Questions? Okay, so we're going to move on to operational excellence, and now we're going to talk about enrollments. Which now I see we have some information.
Okay.
Can you just make sure you reference which document you're referring to, so all the board members can follow?
Okay. I think we only attached one document. Okay.
Do you have a mic there?
I do.
You do? Okay, good.
I do. So I'm sharing my screen and.
And the board members who are here, I gave them a copy so that they could see it nice and big since there's a lot of numbers on there. This is similar to what you've seen in the past or what we've brought to the board in the past through some good suggestions from Dr. Schimpf. We tried to streamline it to make it a little bit clearer and easier to read. If we want to talk about reading from left to right, what's included there is obviously we've got each of the schools down the left. And then the columns reading across is our FY '26 day enrollment. So that was a year ago, what our '16 enrollment was. And then we have FY '21 '16 enrollment, which was where we were at the beginning of this school year. We had originally anticipated about a 2.2% growth, which is pretty consistent with what we've been seeing. Obviously, with the pandemic and everything going on, we actually did see a slight decline at the beginning of the school year. So there was about a 0.35% decline of 22 students. We did see some of that come back by December. Kathy was nice enough to pull that data. So we were up to 6,305 students in December, which was the growth of about 36 students and a little under 1%. So we do think that this year was a little bit of an anomaly. And we continue to use kind of the model that we've used pretty much, I think it started before I was here. So we can compare four different models. So we do a weighted average model, and we do a straight average model. And then, and then we assume either half a student per house or one student per house. What you see here in terms of our projected enrollment from a district perspective is the weighted average model with half a student per house. That's consistent with what we've used over the past three or four years. So that would result in 6,415 students next year at the beginning of the school year, which is a growth of about 2.3%. What we've done this year, too, is we've compared the, the estimates from Dr. Casarda. If you remember, April of 2019 commissioned the study. And so we wanted to make sure what those looked like in, in terms of were our estimates coming in close to his. You will see some differences there in the far right column from the variance column. But I would like to note that most of those are based on the new starting point. So whereas in our analysis, we're able to update it for current enrollment, he obviously was doing this at that in April of 2019. So as we've been able to take additional information into account, we've updated our model accordingly. You can see our growth, we're projecting about 2.3%. And Dr. Casarda is projecting about 2.7%. So those are pretty close. And with some of those biggest variances, you'll see ACES, it's a 36 variance, but we have 32 students starting variance. Because where we actually were in, in 2000, you know, FY '21 versus where we thought we might be. So we feel pretty good about this. One of the other changes is the assumption for EC students. At the time Dr. Casarda didn't study, we didn't have the preschool we're all grant, which has allowed us to serve more students in that very important program. So our numbers do include 156 EC students with between Bristol Grade and Circle Center. And it is only assumed about maybe students, which is what it looked like we would be serving then. So don't know if you have any specific, you know, specific questions, but again, we kind of do this every year so that we can leverage this. Melinda and Troy work with all of the buildings to look at staffing. And then this is one of the pieces of input when we're working on staffing.
So over the years, Mindy, what's been our standard deviation on these projections?
Um, I don't, I'd have to go back and calculate that, but it's actually been pretty, it's been pretty, yeah, it's been pretty close.
Yeah, it's a pretty tight curve, right?
Yeah.
Pretty steep, yeah.
I mean, it'll be interesting to see now, obviously with the pandemic and how things may or may not change with that. But we, year over year, kind of that weighted average model with the, with the half a student per, you know, per house has served us very well. But we still kind of keep doing all of them just, just to see what the outer range might be. So we want to kind of look at a low, a high, and where we really think it's going to be. And, and this year, too, I mean, we've never really, on our own model, we never had a great way to estimate the kindergarten students. But we are leveraging Dr. Casarda's estimates for kindergarten students because he did the live birth enrollment. And so we, usually we were just using kind of an average. So this is mainly our model, but with the kindergarten students being funded by the extensive work that he did as a part of his study.
All right.
Surprise, very cool.
Yeah, it really is, yeah. Especially considering some of the unforeseen factors that still went on pretty close, so.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting. I mean, we have continued to see additional students joining on almost, you know, on almost a daily basis. So I don't know if those will be permanent, you know, permanent additions. Or if they're trying to maybe finish out, you know, a school year here, given the different models that we have. But obviously, we'll take another look at this, you know, '16 enrollment next year and, and see if that's kind of normalized, just see if there's anything different. And the other piece was that I worked with the city of Yorkville to get projections on new housing starts for their estimate. And historically, they don't really give us kind of to the end of the prior year, they really didn't kind of project it outwards. This year, gratefully, they actually have a multi-year model, so we were able to leverage that. So that we're kind of consistent with what the city's looking at. And I do, I get a weekly kind of update from the city that shows actual new home starts. So I do take a look at that, too, to see if that seems to be in line with what we were expecting.
Very good. All right, so I know that's just information, but that's certainly important information, especially if you're a bunch of.
Sure.
Any questions on that?
No.
Dr. Burks, the comment in the chat box. It will be interesting to see what happens if all.
No, yeah, no, no question. It, it could grow. It, it could grow, yeah. Because you talk to parents and there's still that large group that would have liked to have been live and we just ran it over, so.
Yeah, and I think it just really depends on what other schools are doing versus, you know, kind of what we're doing. And, and what options parents, you know, parents have, I think will dictate some of that.
Yeah, I agree with you. So yes, it will be. All right, very good. So we're moving on to our food service contract. There's a couple things that are federal in this that are in campus, so, right ahead.
Uh, Mike is actually going to.
Ah, excellent, Mike.
Okay, so just a brief update regarding our food service, our current food service contract. We are currently in the fifth and final year of our contract with Airmark. And normally, at this time, we would be working on an invitation to bid for a new food service vendor for next school year. However, the USDA and the Illinois State Board of Education have acknowledged the difficulty food service programs have had this school year. And with COVID and everything, and have provided schools who are in the final year of their contract. An option to extend that term one more year, meaning we would continue with Airmark as our food service vendor for the 2021, 22 school year. Now, the district finds this option very beneficial for two main reasons. Through discussions with our food service committee, which is made up of parents and staff. One issue that continuously comes up is the requirement Yorkville has had in past bids to select the lowest bidder when it comes to food service. It's a requirement, it's a state requirement that's only in Illinois and New York. All the other 48 states don't have this requirement. And the committee feels as though the district should be able to select a vendor based on quality as much as cost. The district also feels that it would be extremely difficult to go out to bid this year when there's so much uncertainty next year regarding COVID. And as Mindy, Mindy had just mentioned, what our learning models are going to look like. And basically, what that participation would, would be next school year. Which we would have, which would have like a significant impact on the types of bids that we receive. And so to help resolve this issue, in addition to the USDA providing that option to extend the contract one more year. Illinois officials are looking to pass House Bill 426, which would eliminate that requirement that schools select the lowest bidder for food services. And we have been working with the Illinois Association of School Business Officials on ways that we can help support the passage of that bill. Therefore, we are recommending that the district move forward with this USDA contract extension. In order to allow for the passage of House Bill 426, as well as allow the district another year to gather information to prepare for the eventual bidding process next year. Are there any thoughts, questions, comments regarding that potential extension?
Your committee has recommended this, right? Because they're here. Are there students on this committee, too, Michael?
We had one student on this committee this year, Alexia Harriett. She's done a wonderful job.
Great, great. I'm curious what her opinion was.
She, she did not, she does have one on this specific topic. She's, she's working with the Food Service Committee on an AP research project on vegan food options that we have incorporated into our menu in January. And she's doing a little survey with, with other high school students. And so that's, that's pretty much been her main, her main objective on the Food Service Committee.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could get a couple of students on. I mean, I, I think I agree with this, and we seem, we haven't heard a lot of negatives. But just to, you know, they're the consumers. So maybe we can look into that.
Absolutely.
Part of the committee. All right.
Yeah, we have, in the, in the past, it's a little bit more difficult this year.
Oh, that's true, yeah, that's what you know.
But in the past, Dr. Schimpf has kind of like a superintendent committee of, of high school students and middle school students. And we presented at those meetings and gotten feedback at those meetings. So we do have that. Again, it's a little bit, it's a little bit dated. I think students typically would like more options, maybe some healthier options and some things that sometimes with their cost constraints, you know, of the, of the current contract. We know that Airmark, when they bid, came in extremely low, you know, markedly so. So it's, it's been really tough for them as this contract, even with the small increases that they've gotten. And then this year with COVID, I know it's been, you know, it's been a bit tougher. So we really would like to see a bit more varied of a menu that, that something, you know, we pay even a little bit more might be more appealing to our students and we might get more participation.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's sometimes it's a balancing act. So, all right, so at least we are, what I think are their feelings into consideration.
Dr. Brenner? We have a, we have a meeting with our student body next week. Well, we can make this a topic of discussion.
Perfect.
Perfect timing, Dr. Brenner.
There you go. And of course, this will come for voting next month also, Michael? Does it look up for vote next month also?
I'm sorry, I'm having, I'm.
Did it look up for vote next month?
Yeah, yeah, so, so our next, so my next step is to notify the Illinois State Board of Education that we are, would like to move forward with the extension. That deadline is February 12th, so I plan to submit a request to move forward with that extension by the 12th, which I would probably do tomorrow morning. And after that, there is some additional paperwork that will, that is, plans to push out at the beginning of March. So the actual vote on the contract would come in March. On the one-year extension.
Okay, so even though you're going to inform them that we want to take advantage of this option, we're now really locked into it until we take a vote?
Correct.
Okay, this, just, you know, for protocol, okay?
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, okay, there's no new updates there.
One thing I would like to say, as long as we're in operation, just a huge thanks to Melinda Wadaski, Heather Devery, her team, Ryan and his team. And really working with Towne County for the mass vaccination this past weekend. And to our Board of Ed for your ongoing support and push to be community partners with two, to really do everything we can to move the COVID past, past the, this, this bottom currently is in. So, but we're very proud of our community and very proud of our school district. And we feel about the support of all you and work of our, our team.
And Cam, I was, I was here over the weekend, and it was absolutely incredible to see the positivity of the entire group that was here. The volunteers that were doing it, how beautiful the, the school looked itself, how the police, you know, regulated everything. It was just an absolutely, talk about coordinated effort, it was just absolutely incredibly impressive.
I'll say this, obviously, it was my school district was the one that was being, you know, welcomed by Yorkville. And I could tell you, I don't, I don't see that many teachers during the day just because of how it is over there. Just, it's just a little bit different than it is in Yorkville with having the kids and everything. But I got a lot of positive texts. There was not, I mean, when you, when you're a half an hour, or when you're, when your appointment's at 2:30 and you're getting a schedule, or you're getting a call to come at 2 o'clock. People are very happy about that. So I, I can't, I left there yesterday, I was probably one of the most satisfying experiences I've had as a board member, just to see you all do what you did. So that's amazing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, I, I would like to just, again, just thank you. Melinda, I know you've worked effortlessly for a very long time working with the Health Department. Gary, we appreciate your counsel and guidance in this area as well. I think you make us all sleep better at night. And just amazing collaboration between city, county, school. And, and what a wonderful way that when people come together and Dr. Schimpf, I'm going to use your quote, you know, always say yes, this is what happens. So just thank you to all of you that I know how much effort that you've put into this, so thank you.
Thank you all. It definitely was not just something that, you know, I or Heather or Ryan's team did by ourselves. It definitely took a huge collaboration with, you know, the fire department, the EMTs, the police officers, the EMA. There were so many people that, you know, came together for the planning piece and then the, the volunteering piece. So we definitely didn't do it on our own, but it went really well, so thank you.
Excellent. Maybe all section? All right, thank you. Okay, so we have some new business here. Yeah.
Motion to approve the termination as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion is being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have some transfers, and I don't think this, there was no money change in this, what I can see.
There is, there is an increase.
Oh, because it's one to 1.2. Yeah, okay, so, all right, so first we need to get the motion on the table.
Motion to approve the transfer as presented.
Go second?
Second.
Great, motion may be seconded. We roll call.
Mr. Pavlov?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Right, motion passes. So now we have some new hires.
Motion to approve the hires as presented.
Second.
Motion ready and seconded. And here we need a roll call.
Mr. Poswitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes.
Smallest group of hires. I've seen them a long time.
Yeah.
Alright. So that, that really does have a regular meaning. So we will need a motion to, unless there's anything else that I don't know about. Nothing else to add at all. So we will need a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of the specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body. Including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against a legal counsel for the public body. We determine the validity by ILCS one-two-oh dash two, parentheses C-one. And the purchase or lease of real property for the sale of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussion whether a particular car so should be acquired by ILCS one-twenty slash two, apostrophe C by.
A little motion on the table, we have seconds? Second? Wait, we have seconded here. Okay, thank you, Gary. Right, so we need to go on this.
Mr. Poswitz?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to ask the board members to please leave the weather, leave the meeting that we're in right now. You'll have to join the other meeting. And then when we're done with close, we'll have to rejoin this one.
Yeah, so we gotta go out of board action completely.
Correct. And I will, I send everybody away.
I'm on.
Yeah.
And we opened an executive session meeting and we did that officially and closed it officially. So I had to go through and so.
Did we go in the close before we close out the regular meeting?
No, we can't. We had to close the regular meeting and then. We vote to go into executive session.
That's right. You're right. And we voted to adjourn.
Yeah. Pretty sure of that one. After 21 years, I could already say.
Yeah.
I probably know that guy has Robert's orders in my closet.
Yeah.
Hi Jason. Can you hear us?
Oh yeah, I got you. You guys are fine.
Okay, so we're good.
Alright, so we have decided we're going to open our committee meeting again and close it. Just for fun. So, does anyone like to make the motion to reopen our meeting?
So moved.
Thank you Jason. Okay, second. Okay.
Gary.
That's it. Okay, so nothing has come out of our executive session. We're going to vote on anything anyway. And so we just need to motion to close. So.
Go ahead and call back runner.
Here.
After Tula.
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Ashley?
She can't mute.
And after.
Here, yes.
Alright, so our committee meeting is closed there. Alright, meeting's closed. Thank you all.
Bye everybody.
Bye, enjoy the weather.